I did have Ed Bell come out and they moved all of it out of the street. They put it in the driveway and in the guy's yard, so they got it out of the road so they would stop flipping up the street with the Bobcat. Now they just flip up their own driveway. That was today's venture. Uh, other than that, everything is proceeding. The Bobcat's roof should be, uh, we'll start taking that out after Monday. Over there on, uh, High Ridge, uh, they're gonna continue to lay sod. I should be getting a change order tomorrow, Monday, for about twenty thousand dollars. Change order, deductive change order, uh, for asphalt. We're not gonna have them do, uh, lay asphalt like they were going to do. On the transitions, especially down here, they're gonna install asphalt going down Lake Crest for the transition. I said, cancel that. Um, so that's about twenty thousand in our favor. We still have another hundred thousand dollar change order.
Transitioning to a blend, I mean, we're not gonna have a trench.
So what we're gonna do now is, basically, what the plan's called for was, so the road, when it comes in front of this building, it, we're not gonna make the concrete go toward the old man tracks. It's not gonna have a, like, an intersection. It's just gonna go straight on the far side, and then this is gonna tie in Lake Crest. It is gonna come around and tie in. But it's just a straight line on the other side. Well, what they were going to do is, they were gonna take out about a hundred feet of what, of Lake Crest and repour, new base, new everything, and repour about a hundred to a hundred and twenty feet with new asphalt going down Lake Crest.
Why?
That was what the plan said.
Is that the case?
So that's not happening now. So now they're just gonna saw cut it.
They're gonna saw cut it and then they're forming.
And then they'll, they'll feather it in. Yep. So, uh, and then there's also an asphalt transition area down to wastewater plant. For us to go off the road to get to the wastewater plant. Uh, and we, I believe that as well. So those, that change order, I should be getting the numbers, or we expect it to be in the twenty thousand dollars. Uh, there's still another hundred thousand plus in the dirt we're waiting on. Uh, they're supposedly gonna meet on Wednesday of next week to finalize that. Uh, hopefully, get some closure on that. Everything looks pretty good, uh, for, we're over budget on Dugrow, which is their quality control testing. I've extended their budget. But they're the cheapest one. They're about thirty thousand dollar thing in the whole road. They were the cheapest guys in the whole project, but they're probably gonna be now closer to about fifty.
That's because they're doing more smaller pours, more.
Exactly, you know, e- exactly. It's just, it's a function of the pours. Now.
We're not sure if we're quality.
Yeah, I totally think, you know, we could say that, look, you know, you agreed to the contract, you know, we're not paying you. And, uh, I'm not really sure that's a good answer.
No, but it's, I guess, it's a forecast, right? At the beginning of the job, we're gonna do a job of ten pours. Well, no, it took twelve. Well, you know, actually, it's a quarter pours.
So, you know, in, in the, in the five million dollar project, their thirty thousand was, you know, kind of the most important part, sort of, but, uh, so I'm not worried about it. I've already improved that, so. Uh, so that's all looking good. I mean, I expect them to be out of here as fast as they can, and then... So, we have not done the punch list yet for any street. Uh, they're waiting on to do that. We might do that in a couple of weeks, and.
For the street?
Yeah, so what they wanna do is, according to Kimberly Horn and Ed Bell, what they wanna do now is wait till everything's done, and then we walk the entire city.
Did Kimberly Horn handle it through them?
No, Kimberly Horn, Ed Bell, me, you, whoever wants to do it, we're literally gonna walk and write it on the punch list for the whole city, everything that was done. That saw needs to be replaced. There's a surface crack here. And we do that, and once everything's done, is what they want to wait for, everything's done. Create this massive punch list, and then that's what they're gonna be doing in June. Working on a punch list, probably June and early July. And then, once they get it done, only then you'll start to see them demo their work area, and you get the dirt mound squared away, or, you know, so it's kind of like that's the stages that, that they're gonna do. So I, I still think it'll be July, end of July, when all traces of them are gone, and, you know, and we don't, then the two years will start from that point on. So that's, uh, that's what'll happen. All right, um. Okay, so it looks like right now, I'll, I'll, this, this'll tie into the, uh, when we get into the, the financials, but... So it looks like we've got about four hundred and, uh, roughly four fifty, four forty gap right now. We're getting another twenty, plus maybe another hundred. So I expect we'll end up with a gap somewhere in the three twenty-five to three fifty range. Okay? And we have just under seven hundred thousand in the bank, in the general fund, so still not an issue. Okay? All right, any questions about the roads? Oh, I'm Serena, so I did ask them, I had the engineers out today, and, uh, so my understanding is they are required to saw all the way down the pipe to the river. And, so that's required. They're not required to saw it in the roads. Only that, excuse me. Plus or minus a couple of feet on either side. And they have to do that, and that should be coming eventually. No, that's a drain, it's twelve.
Eighty-five?
No, it's twelve, twelve, twelve total, yeah, yeah. That's why, they, they want a little bit outside, and they're gonna have to saw the outside part as well. Uh, but they're not gonna see that outside. So, um, so we did talk about that today. The engineers were out today. We were discussing that. Okay. All right, uh, any questions? Any more questions on the roads? Okay, the meeting Monday is canceled. It's, it's, it's not this Monday, the Monday after that, in case you're around.
Okay.
God, they got off sequence or whatever. It's hard to tell.
Well, I think you shifted to every other.
Even, I don't know, yeah, it's every other week, but just, we don't know which is the other.
You weren't here on the last one. That didn't count, apparently.
Oh, yeah, I guess not. I, you know, I don't know. Uh, okay, next up, we have, um, so a, uh, town, uh, finance update. Okay, so. So this is, uh, basically, our, this is our financials through April, so this would be seven months. So we're seven months in. Let's start with the general fund. Okay? As you can see, we're seven months in, we've, uh, we've gotten most of our tax money. It turns out, there is a handful of people, there's a handful of people that haven't gotten their tax bill yet from last year because the appraisal district is behind. So, yeah, they, so they don't have any penalties or anything yet. They don't have the bill yet. Okay. So, um, but according to them, it went out yesterday. So yesterday, they sent out a new batch, and our city was in the batch. So there's some, the people that haven't paid yet, they're gonna get the, the letter imminently from the, from the appraisal district, or from the, uh, tax assessor. We do have about twenty thousand dollars that's delinquent right now. And I have the list. I can show it to you if you'd like to see it. Um, but those are the ones that are paying penalties and interest and, um, because they're, they're late. So there's still another twenty thousand inbound, uh, there in property taxes. Look, as you can see from the numbers here, um, we're doing pretty good. You know, sales taxes, another blowout. Um, we're thirty-six thousand after only seven months. So the forty thousand, I, I'm, I'm strongly confident that we will exceed our forty thousand dollar budget on that. Um, builder permits is doing well. Um, another one come in today, I think, Linda, and who came in, uh?
Maybe next, or last week, they, they weren't ready to do that, so maybe next week.
Right, so I mean, but there was just another one that's imminent that should be coming in. He came in to see if he had all the paperwork squared away. So this is one that is gonna be on Peninsula. So you can see we're doing well on the license and permits. You know, everything looks pretty good here. The CRF grant, it was twenty thousand that we got. Well, the, the latest COVID grant that we're gonna get from March is two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, so we're gonna get two hundred and ten thousand dollars is our shot. We should be getting it within a couple of weeks, Linda?
How many days in the next thirty days?
Thirty days, yes. Um, we're getting it in two pieces, a hundred and five thousand now, a hundred and five thousand in a year. Uh, it's good for three years, and it's good for the usual COVID-related stuff and water sewer infrastructure. But not roads.
Not what?
Not roads. Roads are in the new one that they're arguing about now. What is infrastructure, right? Is that homeless shelters and charity college for free, and that's the big political debate now, right? What's in infrastructure? So they put roads over there. Road and bridge is part of that thing, so.
Memphis is holding out for that bridge.
Yes, exactly. So, um, so everything looks good on the revenue side. As you can tell from the, uh, from the expenditure side, we're doing well. That is, now, you have to remember from the expenditure side, a lot of our expenses are front-loaded. So it's, it's not seven twelfths of our expense. We've already paid the auditors. You know, we've already paid a lot of the stuff upfront. We've already paid our entire fire and EMS bill. So this is now, basically now, on the margin. This is the monthly stuff that we're gonna get. You know, which is, the usual, the heat delights the water, you know, Linda. So we're doing really well expense-wise. As you can see, our operating surplus here is enormous. It's, we're doing really well. Okay? On the, uh, on the flip side, the, uh, debt servicing, everything looks good. We had to transfer out a hundred and forty-six thousand because we don't charge our taxes to pay all the bond payments. So everything looks pretty good. It's all kind of right in line. Also down here, about, about two-thirds of the way down, it said capital outlay expenditures. Oh, you see that, that negative three seventy-five there? That's the gap. So last June, we forecasted gap to be in the three seventy-five range, and I think we'll be in the three twenty-five to three fifty range. And, and maybe some downward revision, but, so we're right where we thought we'd be. Okay? We're, we're, we're doing well, and, um, everything is just doing well. All right, I'm not gonna go through each of the individual lines. They're there for your, for your benefit. Um, uh, I don't really have anything to really highlight here. Seems to be, you know, pretty straightforward. Um, uh, on the expense side, we've had a little bit of extra expenses on office supplies. Some of that is the printer. Gotta get a new printer. Um, I think we got a new computer for Steve. So there's, there's a few, couple of minor things that were in the, uh, the through us over in computers and in office supplies. But not, not really material matters. I'm talking about a thousand dollars in a five hundred thousand dollar budget. It's not really big.
The printer was surprising, it was expensive.
Yeah.
It gone up quite a bit.
Well, what I find to be, um, I find to be really nice is if you look at our attorney fees, in seven months, we spent seven thousand dollars. Okay? Um, and remember, anything that's developer-related gets covered under those PSAs. So, um, you know, I don't anticipate really any significant attorney bills moving forward. Um, so that's, you know, that goes straight to the bottom line. That's, uh, that's really nice there. Now, you can see that, you can see there's a line there of contract labor, um, about halfway down the page. That's shame. Okay? So that was, that was the part-time, me using part-time help. Um, other than that, everything is, is tracking pretty good. Um, the, uh, town functions are handled by the MDD. I think we're going to talk about the MDD's role on some other stuff when we get to the budgeting. I'd like to offload more things to the MDD. Serena, it's probably gonna be the parks that's gonna go to the MDD, so you'll have to interact with Linda. But Linda was the one that put the park in the region, so, I think she'll be, uh, she'll be jazzed to get with you and work on some upgrades on the parks. Uh, other than that, um, you know, everything is tracking, I think, uh, I think good. We're gonna get, um, Linda's gonna talk about the money that we got from the insurance. So obviously, this is one of those things that skews our financials a little bit, in that we're gonna have thirty thousand dollars of expense show up as we remodel, but we got the thirty thousand from the insurance company. You know, so it's kinda like we're over budget on expenses when we're really not. They're reimbursed. So that's why I would love to net it, so it shows up as zero, but the auditor won't let us. We have to record it as a separate revenue expense on each side of the balance sheet rather than netting. Um, so, um, we're not worried about it. Does anybody have any questions? Uh, Matt, you were looking through it pretty close. Everything good?
Yeah, sure.
All right, okay. Uh, we're in real great shape. On the utility funds, um, the, uh, kind of the cover sheet there, you can see we're tracking really well on, um, on revenues and expenses. We've got, um, an operating surplus now. See the bottom, the net cash flow, it's typically negative because we're doing all our CapEx at the beginning in the winter. So it's typically low, and now we start really making hay. So during the summer, we don't bill out twenty-five thousand, we bill out closer to forty-five thousand a month. So now, it starts to really ramp up. If you go to the second page, where it has the revenues, on the right-hand side, that's the numbers from exactly the same day a year ago. So it's pretty funny, our water revenue is a hundred and four, and exactly a year ago, we were almost dead on the same number. So we were right on the, the number from last year, um, as far as just the water. The sewer's up. I don't know why. Some of that just may be new houses coming online. It might be the way people paid us. You know, it might be that a year ago, there, there's a lot of people that owe us money. And so we, you know, we don't, this is on a cash basis, right? So if you haven't paid your bill yet, it's not in here. I, I don't know. It's, it's, I can't explain it. The, uh, solid waste is up, but that's because we changed the rates. We're under a new, new contract this year relative to the year before.
The sewer revenue's flat, I think.
It's forty-five dollars a. The only reason sewer revenue gets, gets a little bit hinky is if you pay ahead. If you pay a thousand dollars, you know, some people do, then it doesn't know how, it credits us one. And then next month, there, it doesn't, there's no bill, right? It just takes whatever your bill is off your, your, your total, but it doesn't credit us for forty-five dollars in sewer. So there's a little bit of hinkiness the way that software works, but there's no way around that when you pay ahead. You gotta call it something. Uh, but, uh, but everything looks good. Late fees are low. They're below what they were before. I think some of that is we're a little more lenient with COVID. Um, this year, we've been a little bit low, lighter on the, giving people a little more time, force the late fee button. Um, it's trying to be a little bit nicer, um, on that, a little more accommodating. Uh, yep, water tap fees, we're doing well. Uh, water, so, yeah, there's tap fees, everything's good. Uh, expense-wise, we're going right down Main Street. I mean, expenses, one of those I'd highlight, um, here is the, um, we are paying an attorney because of the, uh, water CCN issues. Uh, that's not a big deal, but that's something we didn't do before. The, uh, scheduled maintenance is all, uh, below budget. We're all doing good there. If you were to look down, uh, about halfway down the page is repairs. So water repairs, we budgeted ten, we're at two. Sewer repairs, budgeted ten, we're at five. So again, nothing unusual. We're, we're right where we should be. The biggest, uh, issue that we have is in the sludge. So basically, the plant did not do, the operator didn't do his job. He did not do any sludge haul. He did one in two years. So the plant was contaminated, the entire plant, front to back, everything was contaminated with sludge. Ten to twelve feet of sludge in every, even the chlorine contact chamber, the chamber that goes out to the lake. So we've had to pump out the entire sewer plant, every square inch of it, and wet haul it off. So that's the issue. But it is what it is. But, but the thing I would say to you is, that sixteen thousand that we spent on wet holes, if that would have been sludge, if instead of sucking it out, we put it in the drying bed, which is the way it's supposed to be done, we would have spent about two thousand dollars. Wet hauling is prohibitively expensive rather than using the drying bed. But we can't operate the drying bed right now because the plant is now dead. So we had the specialists come out with polymers to try and tweak the po- So when you put the sludge in the big drying bed, it looks like a big bin. Then you shoot polymer in, and that makes the water go out of it. The water then immediately precipitates out and it makes it solid. So ninety percent of the weight will drop out, and then it goes on the pad underneath it, and it returns to the plant. That's the drying bed. You gotta get the polymer right. Well, the polymer guys came out to tweak the polymer, and they said, "There's no point. Your plant's dead. Suck it out, start over, because we can't even..." So we're working on that. Now, the good news is, every lab result that we have is perfect. We're perfect. I'm the one that enters them. So we had about fifteen violations in the last two years from the old operator. We have zero right now. It's perfect. Everything is running perfectly. So we're just having to eat a little bit of this right now till we get it up to speed. It's just the way it is. Okay? But, uh, but, okay, we'll, we'll survive. Other than that, everything else looks, uh, looks pretty good. Um, uh, I think so. I mean, I don't, anybody got any questions? Um, you know, like I say, it's pretty much chugging along. We've been pretty fortunate without much, uh, many things. The biggest thing we're gonna have is the lift station. The High Ridge Lift Station, we had to raise it up about six feet and redo the plumbing, redo the electronics, redo everything, redo the rails. We had to rebuild it when the road came in. And, um, I'm probably gonna end up moving that off of the road budget and move it into the CapEx for the sewer plant. So part of what I deal with with the auditors is what things are road-related and what things are CapEx. So for instance, we had to move a water line on Meadow Lake. We had to move it from one spot to another because of the road, because of the drainage. So that's part of the road project, is to relocate. But doubling the size of the lift station, I could pick it because it's, it's actually doubling its size is a CapEx thing. And, but we're doing it because it's in the way of the road. So you can kind of pick which bucket you wanna set it against, and, and right now, I'm thinking, leaning more towards setting it against the utility fund as CapEx. Now, again, we'll get two hundred and ten thousand dollars from the federal government for CapEx. So, it looks, uh, it looks pretty good there. So I think, all in all, it, budget looks really good. Cash-wise, we're in great shape. Utility fund has about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserves, sitting in the utility fund. Um, so. Morgan? Okay, any questions?
Nope.
Okay. All right, next up, we then have Linda. She's up with discussion on our FEMA reimbursements and some of the claims, and we've got a lot of outstanding things out there. Linda?
So, Serena, the, uh, water company, the water company, this is Sam and Steve Hall, and, uh, we were able to file that under our insurance. We've already received, uh, approximately thirty thousand dollars to cover that after the catch-in of the floor, they're paying for a few things like the refusal of the filters and my office, it was carpet, it was the detail. Uh, I think they covered some of the painting, not, but a couple of things we probably won't need to do. Um, it's not a mountain, they're not giving us a depreciation, typically, in general, they give us a depreciation. So the only thing they hold back was approximately four thousand dollars in government contract, which is what they were allowed, or what a contractor was allowed to charge when he does the work if he's doing three sets. So when that gets filled out, um, and it's worked, I can just, that's a little bit of in, um, in additional approximately four thousand dollars. Uh, I just, this week, uh, Sam discovered, or maybe he discovered, the end of last week, that another coordinator at the water plant was actually getting a strike on her storm. It, we didn't have any to head on. He turned it on, and it was not properly, we had to replace that, and that's about four thousand dollars as well. I turned that in, and I was able to tap that on as a supplement. So there's other that was without, there's kind of a stray person. And they already confirmed that, nothing to your fault. Uh, on the other side of the winter storm is the FEMA, uh, fund. And that is the expenses that we incurred for paying extra money to Sam for other side of the water system and the sewer system during the storm, uh, approximately five or six thousand dollars for, um, the ice cream. So then, we're concentrating this on the rest, rest state, the asset of the plant, and that is quite an overwhelming process to be in, and it's filed, and stuff with all of the, the volume there, you have to go through the amount of FEMA. Um, I don't know, where we are in progress, maybe approaching halfway.
Is that amount there, the, the, the eighty percent, or is that the total amount?
That's the total amount. It's kind of this filing toward with FEMA, and that is the amount of money that we sent to Sam. The gasoline that we bought to run the generator for the hockey plant, the ice cream, um.
But what's the, do you think they'll pay on it?
I don't know, right?
They don't pay it, um, I think they only get seventy percent.
Okay.
Um, I also put into the FEMA amount, the one thousand dollars that we have to pay for the CML money. Um, so we, we will hopefully get seventy percent back, about thirty-seven. Uh, then, Tommy, it was possible to try and get upgraded to a different category where we could essentially get eighty percent funding and an honor return, but I still think this is a long way to go. We'll see that, and I don't know if it's a good approach. It's just a problem. Um, after we get approved with FEMA then, the, they don't provide technical directors to us, then it has to go through PIS, which is Protection for Urban Emergency Management. And there's a lot of talk, um, in our meetings about what PIS is gonna require from us. Uh, they may not require us to go through another application process, another verification of the money. So I, I just, that's a big, I don't know, but we are, I think about how we're gonna do that. Um, the mayor already talked to you about the, uh, several city health funds. They were linked to what's called a title city, which are water, which is, and, uh, they got their funds on the name of ten funds to non-title cities, were distributed to states, and then the state has thirty days to get them back. They have not established a policy for us to receive them. So far, I've, I've done everything that they've required us to do to this point. But I don't think they're requiring additional stuff, uh, related to.
Now, that money, so I've read the hundred and fifty-one pages of interim final rules, not to be confused with temporary final, interim final.
Right.
Uh, yeah, so the money is good for three years. You have three years to spend. And. Uh? It's like seven categories. It's usual, like, you know, expanding your hospital, it's, you know, guys giving vaccines. It's the, the usual COVID directly related, and then they throw a couple of hot podges on there, like broadband. You can do it for broadband and, and water and sewer. So, um, so for us, the potential for this money is, we could use it like the, um, So, um, so for us, the potential for this money is, we could use it like the, um, uh, CRF money we did before. We used it for fire EMS because they're first responders, so they are by default COVID frontline workers. There's similar language in the, the latest bill, it's hard to understand, but it appears to be similar. So at the very worst for the city, we would use some of this for, we could use some of it on the city side for the fire EMS and some of it on the utility side for the, for that. But it's, it's only good after March 3rd. So anything we do before March 3rd doesn't count. That was, that's not in this thing, so it's from March 3rd, 2021 on, for the next three...
You can't reimburse yourself for March.
Yeah. All right, so we can, we can reimburse ourselves for everything we did in March.
Right, okay, but going back to reverse that too far.
Exactly, that, that's when they passed the act, it's from the day of the enactment of the act, so, um... But, uh, but you have until December 31st, 2024 to earmark the money. You're still gonna need to spend it, you just have to say what you're gonna use it for.
To commit it.
You don't even have to spend it, yeah. Anyway, but that's, uh, that's the kind of stuff. All right, Linda, is that it, or?
That is it.
Okay, so we'll, we'll keep track of these things and see, see how it goes. I mean, if somebody's gonna give us money, I think we have to take it.
Yep, keep following that paperwork.
So, alrighty. All right, next up, we have executive session. So we're gonna adjourn to the executive session at 9:08 in accordance with Tech Ramco 51. Executive session discussed the following, Tech Ramco, Conso, Town Attorney, Grand Development Agreements, Tech Ramco, Delbert's about real property concerning Sam Hill, Sunset Co., Slade Rock, Boy Scout, and Tech Ramco, Delbert's about development, Sam Hill, Sanctuary, Slade Rock, Boy Scout. All right, so we are in executive session at 9:00.
We're not gonna come back, word.